Mr. Stafford.
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis. Mr. Candycar.
Say.
Mr. Yakbozey.
Hi. Okay, good news report. Uh, Mr. Gibson, where you flying areas?
Hi, thank you for having me today. Uh, we've got a lot of really exciting stuff going on at the junior high right now. Uh, six graders got back from camp pitch about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, and they had a great time. We went, uh, we've got one more group going at the end of November, but two groups have already gone. Uh, our eighth grader's meet for Washington DC on Wednesday, so that's always a really exciting trip. So looking at some great weather, mid-sixties, no rain, so they should really be able to get out and see everything and spend some time at the Edmonds Monuments and museums. Uh, tomorrow we have a, I think it's all, I think it's district-wide, the hats for hurricanes, uh, fundraiser that we're doing to, uh, to give some money to hurricane relief, so it's a dollar and every student can wear a hat. But we're participating in that as well as the junior high. Uh, and then we have a lot of student celebrations, which is one of our key focuses at the junior high this year. So we have our Character Rate of the Month. Last month in September, we had twenty-one kids, uh, little awards for them. We had a stellar student breakfast, which is teacher-nominated kids who've just been really outstanding in their classrooms, or in the hallways with their peers. Uh, they had their breakfast the other day, and the guidance council at the junior high run that, and they invite parents in. Uh, it's a really nice thing in the morning just to kind of build that relationship with parents and, uh, and the students. And then we've had our Good News Call of the Week, which we started doing recently, which is basically also teacher-nominated or anybody in the building, custodians, support staff, administration. And we celebrate kids who are just, you know, being really great kids. You're walking down the hallway and you see kids picking up trash pretty regularly, or making sure that the hallways are clean, or they helping their friends pick up books, or helping kids, new students out and stuff like that. We've had a lot of new registrations at the, at the junior high. We must be out there for the good stuff we're doing over there. Um, so, you know, so what we do is we call them in, and we have, we call their parents. We have them pick a parent to call, and we call their parents and tell them how awesome they are, you know, because the majority of our phone calls to the home unfortunately are not always great. And, uh, it's always really nice to call the parents and tell them some really awesome things that kids are doing. But I'm, we had a mom the other day that was crying on the phone because, uh, she was just so excited because her kid has been struggling the last few years and has really seemed to turn a corner. You know, and that's kind of the idea behind it, is to make sure they know that we're seeing the good stuff that, that our kids are doing, because we've got really great kids and celebrating that. And, uh, so that's been really exciting. It's, it's up to the junior high, so we're just gonna keep pressing forward. Uh, we have our, our traditional Veterans Day, uh, assembly coming up in November, but this year we're actually gonna invite some veterans in and, um, have a breakfast for them, and have them be our honorary guests at the, uh, assembly. And then if possible, we're gonna have them kind of circulating and talk to the kids and stuff like that, so.
When is that?
Uh, I think that's November eleventh. I'm gonna check it.
It's the, on the weekend?
It's the Friday before Veterans Day.
Ten, ten Friday.
It's the tenth. Nine in the assembly, so.
Yeah. You said you're having breakfast, right?
Yeah, we're having, you got RSVP. Do we, do we, we don't have school at ten, do we?
Right.
Because the ninth is conferences, so it's the ninth, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Wrong answer. So it's the ninth, that Thursday.
Okay.
That Thursday morning. If you guys, if you guys are more than welcome to come. Should be, not gonna be, you know, really overboard breakfast, but, uh, packed and full breakfast.
Just give me a minute.
But it should be nice. So it's just something we want to do to recognize the people in our community who, who served and, you know, allows the freedoms that we have.
Any questions for Mr. Gibson?
I just have a comment. Uh, this is DeFranco. Uh, back in the day when my son went, she took the initiative to, and I said this before, I'm not gonna say it again, she took the initiative to call and give a good news report to, uh, one of my, our, our children that was struggling. And she took the initiative to, uh, figure out what was going on, set up a program, worked with Mr. Coleman, turned him around, and he excelled in, in high school, so. Um, so always, you know, getting those bad reports is a good one, that, that helps. So thanks for taking your, and putting kids that are struggling.
Yeah.
That does mean a lot.
No, that's awesome. But they have a lot of, so, that's great, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf. That was his first presentation. He's a wrecker on you, he didn't have any notes.
You've got a herd there behind you.
You've got them in your hands.
You're right, I did, that's all right.
Thanks so much for having me. I know. Appreciate it. Uh, appreciate you guys having me back again. Uh, as you can see, um, lots of great things going on in athletics here in the fall. Um, starting off, we did announce our second, uh, Hall of Fame class. Uh, six individuals and one team are going in. Uh, the event will be February tenth. On the ninth, we were gonna do the, um, inductees to the basketball crowd in the community that night, um, at the basketball game against Avon Lake, uh, that Friday night and Saturday night at ten, at six-thirty here in the cafeteria. Uh, we will hold the induction. Um, as you can see, the, the inductees are Vic Elsasser, Jake Personwell, Lacy Riker, Christine Thompson, who's Christine Detwiler now, Brian Tuckevic, Sonny Wilburn, and the nineteen-seventy-seven boys' cross-country team. So, um, if you had a chance to read the bios on any of, any of these, um, it is, it's clear, um, they are very well-deserving and, uh, it's tough on the committee to, uh, to put in. Last year, we did put seven individuals in a team in, so it's actually one less individual this year based on, on the way the voting happened. Fall season sport, uh, highlights, um, volleyball just repeated as conference champions. Uh, they were twenty-one and one overall, uh, with their record this year seventeen-one in the conference. Uh, they actually split with Avon. Um, we won there, they won here, um, so co-champions, but forever they'll be on a banner as a champion here. Uh, we did get to celebrate with them after the game against Westlake last Thursday night. We came back here and, um, let them take pictures with the trophy and, you know, we are the champions, had a lot of fun with them that night. So, um, secondly, Josh Hill won the cross-country championship, boys individual championship this past Saturday. Uh, girls soccer finished the season twelve-one and three, with an overall record five-one and three in the conference. That actually placed them third based upon the way that works. But the more important, the more impressive stat of the girls soccer program is, they outscored their opponents forty-two to five this year. They gave up five total goals. Michelle Hussein was in the OHSA record books, um, with eight consecutive shutouts to start the season. Um, eight, if, if you have eight consecutive shutouts, uh, that qualifies you to go in the record books, that's half the season. Um, and then overall, as a program between the varsity and JV, they gave up seven total goals, um, which is, you know, pretty impressive and pretty good for our future as well. Uh, girls tennis, I wanted to make a note on them, they did finish second at the LC Triple-A championships this, uh, this spring, or this fall, I'm sorry. Um, and then also with the, you know, with the girls tennis team, um, all, we had, uh, four of our five, um, entries made it to the third round of the sectionals, which is, which was, you know, something to do for our program, which I want to make a note of. Um, OHSA tournament play starts this week, um, for boys and girls soccer and volleyball. Boys soccer plays Wednesday at North Ridgeville. Girls soccer hosts the winner of Midview and O'Leary near Thursday night at seven o'clock. Uh, and volleyball starts there, um, starts their tournament play this coming Saturday at Midview in the sectional district against the winner of, uh, O'Leary and Lorraine. That game will be played at noon. Um, and then lastly, uh, football's heading to week nine with a chance at the playoffs. And I think that's, uh, a huge testament to Coach Passarello and, and his staff and what they've done with the program. Um, really, really enjoy watching, um, those kids, those students compete this, uh, this fall, and I look forward to, uh, a game Friday night, you know, against Avon, and they're home for senior night against Westlake, uh, a week from Friday. So, really appreciate the community's support of that program this year. Um, it's, it's been great to see, um, the number of fans out every game and, and look for that to continue here.
Uh, it's appreciation under the Lorraine County's hosting, so if you're interested, let me know, or please let them know. Is that the one from the show? Yes, yes.
Get to dinner.
So. So I have that. Also, then I, uh, this year, the state auditors are back in doing, uh, doing our audit. We've had independent for over ten years, and they, uh, part of the audit is they have to ask the city board and the superintendent treasurer if you'd like a pre-audit meeting, and basically that's just to tell you what they do during your audit. What stuff they look for, what, what process they handle, who's on the team. So if you're interested in a pre-audit meeting, let me know, and we'll set up a date and you'll come in and we can go over that. If it's more than three of you, we'll have to have them come at a board meeting. But, um, I don't think there'll be anything to discuss other than the procedure, because as you know, we had a clean audit last year, we had a few management comments, and we've got those taken care of, one being the disaster recovery plan. Mr. Costa worked on that and Mr. Romar, and it's all been approved by the board, which you know, can't be ignored, so that is taken care of. So, uh, we're starting the year off good and hope that with our new, uh, financial software, the audit will go as well as expected, right? Reminder to you that capital conference is coming up. If you have any, uh, change in your plans for attending the conference, please let Gemma know right away so we can make the changes before it's too late to change anything. And of course, uh, our board meeting starts at six-thirty, and it was advertised, so that I just wanted to let you know. Also, um, if you have tonight's, uh, financials, uh, you know, the regular routine financial reports, uh, we have our board minutes to approve. We have the financial reports for the month of September, and we have to use our five-year forecast. Uh, we worked, uh, uh, hard on the forecast last spring and had it in order, uh, critiqued it, uh, in-depth when we went to the, uh, Chicago for our, uh, bond presentation. And, uh, we worked on it, Mr. Romar, Steve and I worked on that again through the forecast and updated the forecast. A couple of things that I'd like to point out to you, and our forecast is, it's a working document based on state and local funding, and it, it's ever-changing document, which the board knows that and, uh, and you're very well aware how quick things can change with the variables in the forecast. We, uh, I'm accounting for, the health insurance consortium has already expressed to us that on the next agenda, there's gonna be another health insurance holiday. We had it last year, and we have it again this year, which that's, uh, saves the district about three-hundred thousand dollars. So we're happy for that, and, uh, we also have put in some extra expenses to cover any capital needs that we might have with everything that's going on. So I have the forecast in there for you to review, and I'm sure you have. I also always like to point out the donations. We had a donation from Mr. Dave Cotton, uh, for donating a collection of four-hundred-and-fifty play scripts to the drama class at MLC High School valued at approximately four thousand dollars. And as I've said it before and I'll always say it, we appreciate any donation that we can get of value to our students and our staff, so we appreciate that. Um, I'll ask the board to approve the treasure recommendations from AA to AP.
Your motion?
What, um, your motion?
Teresa, your second. Mark, any discussion?
I just had questions, like on the check, listening to the check. You have someone that is, it's just for one-time pay?
Yes, and, uh, we're working with, uh, Kinect, alright, T C site, I would correct some of these things with Venus. Uh, this is what we call a multi-vendor purchase order, and Mr. Wood would be, he's probably stepped out, but Mr. Wood would be one that used these for, if he has a handful of people doing the same thing like a game worker, we can change the vendor and pay off the same purchase order, we can, he encovers them out for all of them instead of setting them up as an individual vendor. So we're working with them so we can see the name in the old software, we can see the name when we changed it, and this one, it just says one-time pay because it's called a multi-vendor purchase order. But when, when the check's printed off and all the detail, if we would print that, it would show. So we're working on that for the reports. The reports are still some of the issues we're working on, but I did go in and look recently. I said that to make sure, and you've seen there was multiple rows. That's exactly what it was.
I've never seen it in a row, it's like, what?
Yes. So I appreciate that question.
Any else for Mark?
Rob, do you wanna break this off D and E, cause I was gonna stay for A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Teresa's in the wood.
I'll amend the motion.
I'm gonna go to A, B, C, D, and E, right?
Yes, that's right.
Your second for that. Mark, any discussion? Roll call.
And this is for which?
A, B, C, D, and E.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Stafford?
Hi.
Mr. Candycar?
Who are they, or no?
No.
Okay, that's A.
Mr. Yakbozey?
Your motion is A. Mark, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Stafford?
Hi.
Mr. Candycar?
Camp, oh, that's A.
Yes. Mr. Yakbozey?
I said the other one wrong, yeah?
Yes, you did.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, moving on there to Steve.
Yes, uh, just a quick update on the building project and supports where, uh, we have, uh, started the demo process at both Schuene and Harris School, and the demo process is underway and should be completed, uh, I would think, within the next two, three weeks. On the design side, as far as the new building is concerned, that process is continuing. Uh, most recently, our team of architects met, what was it, Thursday, Mike? Uh, I think it was last Thursday, uh, the team of architects basically was at Powers the entire day. And Beth Schwartz did a great job of setting up the schedule, uh, where teacher representatives from all grade levels, uh, art, music, physical education, studio staff, everyone had an opportunity to meet with the architects. And the, the design process is now moving into more specific, uh, types of things, for example, uh, student desks, uh, you know, classroom, you know, how the classrooms, they arranged, uh, storage, uh, lockers versus cubbies, you know, those, those kinds of things, uh, how technology will work, uh, in each of the classrooms. So very, uh, moving into very, very, uh, or much more specific design kind of items at this point. Preschool staff was also, uh, involved in, in that meeting Thursday as well. I know they're coming back this week, I think it's Thursday, to meet with the kitchen staff. Uh, they have powers. So very, as, as we've talked before, architects are very thorough, uh, very comprehensive, uh, very, uh, very much tuned in to the needs of the staff as they go about designing this building. As they said many times, you know, this is, this is, uh, you know, our building, and they want the building to work for us. They don't have any preconceived notions about, you know, how it should be designed. But very, very good listeners, and we've been impressed throughout the process how they've been able to take input from the staff and incorporate that into the design process. So, uh, again, our process is ongoing, and we will keep you posted. And as of last Thursday, they've, uh, indicated that we are still on track, uh, obviously a long way to go, but still on track for August, uh, two thousand and nineteen, which is, that's what we're at, as of right now.
The two, uh, architects were primarily Rodwell and Aaron too.
Uh, actually Rodwell could not be there, uh, but Aaron was there, and there were even two other, uh, architects that, uh, joined in as well from their staff.
Okay. The next core meeting is when?
The next core meeting was rescheduled from this past Friday to this Thursday.
One o'clock?
One o'clock.
I think it's one o'clock.
Is that, let me double check.
You're, you're on, right?
Yeah, Mark's gonna go, go ahead, Mark wants to go.
Let me double check, I think it's Thursday, the nineteenth.
It is, it is the nineteenth at one o'clock.
Yes, at the junior high, and that conference. That's correct. Okay.
Is it?
Is it?
Got that?
Yep.
Okay. Before I have collaboration with the architects and the teachers, when the teachers ask for something, architects maybe can't give them for code, um, if they fully understand the reasons why, are there any big issues going on?
We, we actually haven't encountered that yet, but it's, it's, it's gone very, very well, and I think the staff, uh, I think they've been very impressed, you know, with the architects, and, you know, just kind of their flexibility and their, their approach to the entire, uh, processes. It's, it's been kind of neat to watch. Mike and I were both in the room, were part of, we were there the entire day, but we were there for the better part of the morning, just kind of sitting back while the, you know, staff, you know, representatives from staff were meeting with the architects, and it was one of the advantages.
Mike, Steve. Mr. Romar?
I just want to give an update that we've talked about for like almost a year now, which is the, our partnership with College Board, having our students take the PSAT. So that occurred actually finally last week. We had a couple under a thousand students take the PSAT and the National Merit Test here at the high school. So we'll get those results back, I think for teachers, December fourth, and for students, December eleventh. So we'll get those results back, we will, uh, have some professional development for teachers to take a look at that. You know, we never looked at that kind of data before because it was always a surprise. Parents decided if they wanted their children to take the PSAT or not, or, you know, et cetera. So, on having everyone take it, ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, it gives us the opportunity to look at more data and see how our students are comparing and preparing for college. Um, and I'm really excited about when, uh, when we get this information back, we'll be able to connect the students, you know, how they perform with Khan Academy to develop an individualized plan for each student to kind of help them prepare, uh, for when they take the, uh, SAT or their junior for real. So that's gonna give freshmen almost two years, and sophomores a year, a year, a little over a year to kind of do what they need to do to prepare and do, to improve on those steps. So I was pretty excited about that, and that was, have to thank the high school staff and the guidance staff because, um, trying to, trying to make all that work and have everyone fit in the building and fulfill all the requirements of how much space between desks and who's allowed to, you know, monitor who, and it was a lot of work to, to make that come off and work flawlessly here at high school in one day. So, uh, especially students with needed accommodations, I mean, it was just a lot of work. So congratulations to the high school staff and the guidance staff for making that all happen, it'll be a success. Also, I had a real quick, Amanda Sears, our technology integration specialist. Um, we had a little, uh, coding, uh, session over the summer here in the CLC for some students, know her really well, and she is, um, starting a computer science club, uh, in Powers. So we're starting with the second grade, she's doing a lot in their classrooms with coding, computer science. So she's gonna start a little computer science club, about the second graders, we'll see how that goes and see if we can expand that, hopefully, you know, over to Dord and do some more, again, with technology, coding, computer science, really cool. This is a fun thing to share. Any questions for Mike?
Just thought, I'll shoot, um, and I think I was talking to Steve about this, I asked him about, you don't know what, like someone would take some college classes in the community, and I wanted to know how much that would cost them, given the grade point, and how much books would be paid for, how much classes would be paid for, and, um, and I'm right in the middle of trying to figure that out, how much is that paid for? And then started thinking how much, if, if that is paid for, for academics, and I'm just talking out loud here, how can pay-to-play come into pay, into play with a potential reduction on that? If we're paying for college students to get free education, how could we potentially help a pay-to-play? I don't know the answer to that, it just, it just triggered a thought in my mind, if we're helping with college here and that, how could we help them, if it makes sense to run some others into that? I don't know who can answer that now, but if some others will think about that, I don't know, just something I just, it just triggered a thought in my mind, I'm gonna imagine that.
If I could, I could jump in if that, if, okay. Uh, one of the differences is, uh, the college credit plus program is a state-mandated program. Uh, what that looks like varies from district to district, and one of the things that we've been able to do here in Amherst is keep our costs down as the board is where, you know, there's not another high school in the county, uh, where as many credits were earned in partnership with our county community college and what we have here in Amherst, we bring them to one in the county. And the reason for that is that we're able to provide so many of those courses right here on campus, uh, because the cost of the college, districts are required to have a college credit plus program, as they say, what that looks like varies district to district. But what we've been able to do too here is to offer those courses on-site, which is less expensive for the school district than if a student has to leave our campus, go to LCC. So that's an area where we've been able to, to keep the cost down, so there is some differences between talking about, you know, the academic curricular program versus an extracurricular program. I don't know if that clarifies or not, but that's one distinction.
Okay. Mr. Ingles not here. Any more questions for Mark, by the way? Not a lot. Uh, anything else administratively, Steve? Mike, not Mark. Nothing else? Okay. Personnel recommendations?
Yes, I know the board's had an opportunity to review and look at all of the agenda items here related to personnel. Uh, there's, there's nothing here that's, uh, out of the ordinary. You see some, uh, recommendations for some, uh, new hires as well as substitute, uh, some athletic, uh, help for the upcoming, uh, athletic season. With that, we'd like to recommend approval of items eleven A to eleven G.
Teresa, second. All right, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Candycar?
Hi.
Mr. Stafford?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis? Mr. Yakbozey?
Hi. Educational recommendations?
Yes, just two items here, and item A is the, uh, recommendation to approve resolution for, uh, recognition of the district's support organizations. This is, uh, field groups, athletic boosters, band boosters, uh, cheer boosters, et cetera. And the board is aware of the last, I think, four or five years, uh, we've been doing this, and really, uh, it works out very, very well because these, uh, support organizations provide us with information annually, uh, such as attendance budget, uh, ideas they have for fundraisers for the upcoming year, as well as all the contact information for president or vice president, secretary treasurer, those types of things, as well as documentation of their 501(c)(3) status. So again, this is something we implemented four, five years ago, you know, given the close working relationship that we have with these groups, uh, so I, I agree with, you know, that, and. The other item is our recommendation to approve the, uh, two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school calendar, and pending your approval, uh, tonight, uh, to approve this item, we will be able to refer this to Dave Kaufman, uh, which, you know, does the town planner, which is, uh, a calendar that is distributed, you know, across the community, and it's always nice if we can include as many of the school days as possible on that two thousand and eighteen calendar. So I am anxiously, uh, having to wait, we checked with him, and he said, if you pick the street out the seventeenth, does that give you enough time? And he said, no problem. So, uh, that is, it is in place, which is a good thing. Uh, the calendar is very similar to what we have this year. The biggest difference is, instead of starting on Wednesday, we would actually start on Monday, uh, which would be a, a five-day week, uh, to start the school year. But what that does is that allows us to finish the first semester prior to Christmas, which I know is a, is really, uh, a nice thing, especially here at the high schools in relation to exams, because sometimes what you're running to is to finish, and then you have this break at Christmas time, and then you come back for a week, and you're gonna hang out and finish in the semester. So actually, it worked out very, very well by picking up a couple more days, uh, you know, that first week of school, but other than that, uh, very, very similar. We'd like to recommend approval of items twelve A and twelve B.
Your motion? Teresa, second. Teresa, discussion? Roll call.
So I see on here, um, that for, I think it's preschool screening, we have a parent orientation that are only during the day, you only do those during the day without during the evening? I'm just asking.
Yeah, normally, you can't earn preschool orientation, yes, we can do those during the day.
Okay. And then I see that school's gonna go longer, so we'll go after Memorial Day?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yeah, we're, I think we come back, if I remember, for two days, two school days and then a staff day. Uh, so our seniors will actually finish up before Memorial Day, um, our graduation will be tentatively that same Saturday, which we've been able to do underclassmen will come back to finish up for two days, and then I think staff day is, I mean, during.
Yes, it is, okay.
Yeah, there are a couple of differences, you know, a day here, a day there, but, uh, you know, fairly close. I think spring break is still the last week, um, you know, in March, even though Easter We have a bus that goes to Puffillow Creek anyway and Oberlin has asked us if we'd be willing to transport their students. So it just, it works out well. We're going there anyway and, you know, we can transport their students and then we work on Kathy Gale, works out payment for Oberlin. So it's just, it's kind of a win-win for everybody. Item B is, this is a contract, it's hard to believe, we're talking about school renewal, but it's almost that time of year. Urbans line here, sure, where did our store renew last year and their prices are exactly the same for this upcoming winter as what they were last year. This was one of those items, and actually we were talking about this when we were going through the five-year forecast, where we're going to monitor very, very carefully our savings due to the consolidation. We were, as you remember, when we were hemming for the bond issue, we talked about the idea of consolidating for five to four schools and saving approximately $500,000 a year in operating costs. This is one of those little areas. And so we're going to monitor very carefully this year, savings, we've got a quick handle on staffing, obviously everything's in place, but there are those other areas where we're going to benefit from some savings, for example, utilities. So we're going to monitor that carefully throughout the winter. And then stolen, I mean, we are essentially clearing just one less parking lot that we're, you know, clearing as far as insulting and those kinds of things in the winter time. So when you start to add things up and Barb had actually mentioned today that, you know, from an insurance standpoint, you know, we're no longer insuring, you know, Schu and Harris, you know, from an insurance standpoint. So there's some of these smaller items that, you know, that add up and the result is cost savings. So that was just one of those that happened to come to mind as we were going through the forecast and just talking about the savings from the consolidation. And then the last item is, you're aware, we had hoped to do the HVAC upgrades this summer here at Steel, but the bond issue obviously didn't pass till last November. So by the time we worked through that process and went out to bid, we actually only received one bid. And we were not comfortable accepting that bid and decided to put the project on hold for a year and rebid this fall. And I'm so glad we decided to do that because by rebidding, we had three bids and they were all three significantly lower than the one bid that we received last, I think it was maybe February or March, as I recall. But the lowest bid recommendation from our architects is, again, the mechanical, just over $2.2 million, which as I say, is about a half million dollars less than that bid from last. So waiting a year, I think definitely paid off for us. So, again, with pending year approval, that process can begin to start as far as ordering, you know, the equipment and necessary things for that upgrade next fall, or excuse me, next summer. And they have a completion date of August 10th in the contract, so things should be ready to go for the start of next year. And that would complete my recommendation, business recommendations, items 13A and 13C.
Your motion? Teresa, second? Discussion? Roll call.
So I'm looking at the thing from Urbans. You're saying that, but we're still doing the, on here, we're still doing the South Lake and the bus turnaround at Harris? But that's what's.
That's just, that's on the, that's on the contract, but we're, we're just, we're just doing the area of Harris where the buses, the buses still come in to Harris.
Go down, go right.
Right, coming around.
Gotcha.
And then they're coming in to drop off and pick up the issue you're having.
I see Powers is not on there.
That's done by.
Our paper were doing that?
Yeah. The store removals is kind of a team effort between our staff and also Urbans.
Okay.
So any question, I hear?
Me too.
Just one other clarification, Steve, for the public, as questions keep coming up, and maybe you could just explain publicly why we only received one bid and didn't start the HVAC in early in the fall? And maybe you just talk to that and clarify why that happened?
Sure.
So everybody knows where it's coming from.
Obviously, we couldn't do any of our health specs or anything until after the bond issue passed because this is being paid for through proceeds from the bond issue. So that process started in mid-November and by the time that process was completed and went out to bid, what we heard is that most companies have their projects lined up for the summer. And, you know, that's why, you know, what we were told by the architect, we wanted to receive one bid. Just because we were later than usual getting out for bid and, of course, we didn't have any control of that because we couldn't start in the process until the bond issue passed, if you remember. The recommendation was to go back and rebid this fall before people get their projects lined up for this upcoming summer. And by waiting and doing the bidding in the fall versus, you know, later in the winter time, we obviously benefited from a very competitive bid market. So it worked out well.
If you have a motion, a second on the floor, any more discussion? Not roll call.
Mrs. Gillis? Mr. Sappo?
Hi.
Mr. Candycar?
Hi.
Mr. Yakovozie?
Hi.